It's not six thirty yet, though, is it? Good evening and welcome to the Northampton County Council meeting. Would Tom Giovanni please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Zimbo, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Brown. Mr. Kuzick.
President.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Gofredo.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Present.
Mr. Law.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Ms. Vargo Heffner.
Here.
Ms. Sarinski.
Here.
All present, Mr. Kuzick by phone.
Thank you. Can we please have a motion to approve the minutes of December ninth, 2021?
So be it.
Who was second, I'm sorry? All in favor by acclamation?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Carries? Courtesy of the floor, no one has signed in, is there anyone here that wishes to speak? To courtesy of the floor? You could come to the microphone, you have five minutes, I need you to identify your name and your address, please.
Hi, uh, my name is-
I just state, well, you get ready. For those of you that are new, what we do is we allow them to speak and we don't necessarily interact or ask questions. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Millie Bean. I've been here before. Sorry, I got here a little late.
Right on time.
I, uh, first of all, I wanted to say thank you to everyone on the council and all the folks that do so much for our county. That's what I wanted to do first. I came to speak before, some of you know, because of the Howard Farm that I live next to and adjacent to in Plainfield Township that was bought by the Nazareth Borough Sewer Authority on November fir- first, they have had closing. The Nazareth Borough Municipal Sewer- Municipal Authority bought it for eight hundred fifty thousand dollars, way above the actual, what it should have been sold for. It was way overpriced. And there was a lot going on, was sat for sale for a long time, some of you folks know the story, but, uh, it's been a huge concern because they bought it, they're a sewer plant. They bought a preserved farm, preserved by the Northampton County Farmland Preservation. And it was sold by two elderly, uh, elderly couple that had it since nineteen fifty-eight. They had it for sale, they were moving away where their children were. So now, the Sewer Authority bought it with the intent to put Class B biosolids on this land. I read so much different information, sometimes I get confused, but, um, I went to the December sixteenth Nazareth Borough Municipal Authority meeting and at that, they, a statement was made that, uh, by the chairperson, um, Mr. Fornos, that, uh, they thought maybe it might be able to be used for the mid-Atlantic land application biosolids as a research facility. Now, I'm sorry to tell you that, having lived there, at this farm next adjacent to this, since nineteen sixty, I don't appreciate being thought of as guinea pigs. This is, our farm is adjacent to this property and I find it to be a huge concern that anyone can buy a farm, a preserved farm, in Northampton County or anywhere to put Class B biosolids on. I, uh, if you drive around, you might see signs up about the Sewer Authority, um, buying property. I've got a hundred and fifty signs, they're all up. I got another sixty sign, they're all up. I got another sixty signs, I'm putting them up. I'm gonna fight this as much as I can. Tara has been out to see the farm along with Derry Sicker, I've been in touch with the Delaware River Keepers. We've been going to the Northampton, or your meetings, Nazareth Borough Municipal Authority meetings, the council meeting on Monday night, I spoke there. And when I got all done, I said to them, I said, "If the biosolids is not a problem, then why did they not find a place in Nazareth instead of coming up to Plainfield Township and buy a preserved farm? A preserved farm that the county put out money for, the township putting out money for. And it's next to our farmer's field, fair, it's next to our community park. I know some of you had heard this before, but I have to, it's important enough for me to be here because this is our community, it's not somewhere else. And I'm thinking, in all of the area, they could not find somewhere to get land that's not a preserved farm next to homes, we're right adjacent. And here, I just wanna read this quickly. "Class A biosolids have been treated and tested for pathogens and deemed safe enough to use in agriculture, gardening, and landscaping. Then Class B biosolids, or any that don't make Class A, they might be safe enough to use in some applications, but they also contain detectable pathogens and are hard, high concentrations of metals like arsenic, chromium, mercury that might make them unsuitable for growing food and soil remediation." While Class A biosolids, they figure are an asset, which I'm not gonna agree with, but Class B are expensive dispose of, Class B, they are expensive to dispose of and/or transport and might pose a health risk for people working with them. So getting grade B up to an A is, it costs a lot of money, you have to heat it and do all kinds of things. And one of the other things that, I hope I can do that right, when they put it out, they have to put a sign up. The sign says, "Access restricted." The people that work and take, have to put this stuff out, they're, OSHA has regulations to protect the people that have to put this stuff out. They, OSHA and the National Institute for Occupational Safety, OSHA and whatever. So, um, it says here, "Whereas EPA rules restrict public access to lands treated with Class B biosolids in order to protect public health, these rules, rules do not apply to workers involved with Class B biosolids handling land application." I don't quite understand, um, there's, uh, anyway, the bottom line is, um, I have one other thing. And now, they're trying to say that, "Let's just spread these biosolids onto our land, from the li- from the land into the air and into the water." "Waste water samples revealed record levels of coronavirus across U.S. Waste water is going to be a leading indicator for what's going on in a given community and what's to come." A senior scholar at the John Hopkins Center for Health Security. With at-home COVID-19 tests in high demand and if efficacy in question, health departments from California and Massachusetts are returning to sewage samples to get a better idea of how much coronavirus is spreading through communities and what might be in store. Now, all these things can be so important to every one of us, our health, our future, everything that's going on. And this, this virus isn't making itself up, it's coming from somewhere. And by using this, this kind of biosolids that they think, the EPA is saying, "It's okay, you can use it for fertilizer. It can be Class A, it can be Class B, but it still has a lot of bad stuff, and the Class B has a lot of bad stuff." And I could go on and on, but I just am here because this is a critical issue for my life, my family, my neighbors, our community, and every one of you, everywhere. Because this stuff, now they're saying, if it, if it's out there and it's causing some of this stuff and they're putting it on the land, every one of us, our food and our source of, of, um, health is impacted by this. I'm sure my five minutes are up. Thank you very much.
If there's anything that you want council to see that you haven't already emailed, please let, um, give it to the deputy clerk and she'll make sure that we receive copies of it.
Oh, um, yeah, I did bring along this packet, PA Program for Beneficial Use of Biosolids. And in here, I'm sure you all remember Cinegro. And here's a document in here about Cinegro, about the disposal of sewage sludge requires that wastewater solids be stabilized, blah, 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 blah. This is Cinegro memo. There's a whole packet here, a lot of information. If I can leave one, and you want to share it, I have more at home, I'm gonna share them with other folks, I just got my hands on this.
Okay, or she, you know, you could talk to, about getting copies back or whatever, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who has not signed in that wishes to speak at courtesy of the floor?
Madam President, if there is anybody else, I'd like to take a moment, please.
Yes, sir.
I want to address something today because of what today is. Today's January sixth, twenty twenty-one was a very bad day in our nation. As a veteran and coming from a family of veterans, my father was a World War II veteran, my brother was a Korean War veteran, and I was the tail end of Vietnam, and I have brothers and brothers-in-law's and nieces and nephews who all served. The seat of democracy was attacked a year ago and it's a sad day. And now that we're coming in here today with a whole new crew of people, I want to stress the importance of how I feel about our community. I spoke briefly with JP earlier about it and it's very unique how we in this Lehigh Valley take care of each other. And I sincerely hope that as we move forth as a new council, that we have that same approach as we move forward in the next two years. Because what's happening in DC cannot happen here. We have to remain brothers and sisters with each other and it's awfully important that we do that as a council. And I just wanted to make sure that that point got put out that way because, you know, I often stress the fact of who I am and where I came from. I'll give you a little short brief about my family. On my father's side, my great-grandmother was a slave and she married an Amish farmer. And that's where the Myers name came from. That was a huge accomplishment back in those days. And they moved up here to Bethlehem and my father was a Liberty graduate and then eventually moved down to Easton. And that's how number eleven came here of fifteen. And my parents always spoke about being respectful for people. And if there's one thing I cherish about being from the Lehigh Valley, even when I was, when I served, it's how we took care of each other, how we felt towards each other. And I'm just asking that we continue with that path in the future and I welcome the new members. And I thank you for allowing me to speak for a few moments about the sadness that's going on in our nation today. But we can't let that stop what we do here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Is there any, one else who wishes to speak on courtesy of the floor? All right, closing that section, do we have a county executive report?
Ma'am, Mr. Myers, we know where to come when we need to do barn raisings now. I didn't know. I didn't know, I didn't know. Happy New Year, council. I wish that my report, um, wasn't full of challenges, but it is. And it speaks to the times we live in. As you know, we are awash in Omicron virus right now. We have one of the highest infection rates in Northampton, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania here in Northampton County. And from the very beginning, we in Northampton County have been very active in pushing back against the coronavirus. And that's because we are located in the middle of three of the world's hottest spots from the very beginning of this pandemic. New York City, New Jersey, we share a border with, and the greater Philadelphia area. And because of our interconnectivity with those regions, it seems like when they spike with the coronavirus, we spike with the coronavirus. And unfortunately, often, like at the beginning of the pandemic, where the federal government let us down with a failure to have N95 masks forced, failure in testing, failure in any kinds of rules to guide us in places like our nursing home, we were on our own. And for a long time, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania was very good to us. The Department of Health was very good to us and continues to be to this day at Greystale. But we've had less and less guidance from Harrisburg as well with respect to how we contend with the coronavirus pandemic. So, we took measures on our own. And we know about the Greystale measures and we can go on for hours and hours about those. But we've also had our collaborations with Easton Hospital to do the COVID-19 testing and with Coordinated Health, where now, not only are we doing testing for COVID-19, we're also vaccinating folks. And so, so far in our collaboration with Coordinated Health, Lehigh Valley Hospital on Emmerich Boulevard, we have had eight thousand two hundred and twenty-one COVID-19 tests performed. On New Year's Eve, when they weren't even supposed to be open, they did a hundred and ninety-nine tests. New Year's Day, they had a hundred and one tests. And on the first day of expanded hours, this Monday, they had over three hundred tests done and they had to close the site early because they had an over, subscripted, they had too many people in line to handle. Of course, they tested everybody who was in line at the time they closed it. But this was Northampton County doing our thing with our American Rescue and then with the CARES money and then American Rescue money to fight back. And I think we've been doing an excellent job, both inside our county and outside, but we're being overwhelmed again. And this has caused me to think about the necessity for the study of the creation of a Northampton County Health Bureau. And I am here tonight to announce to you that tomorrow, an RFP will be issued for a organization or academic, academic facility to reply to our request for proposals to study the creation of a Northampton County Health Bureau. Now, we have specifically now reached out to the following academic institutions who specialize in studying the necessity and creation of health bureaus. Johns Hopkins University in Maryland, Drexel University, Temple University, Jefferson University, Harvard University, the University of Wisconsin, the University of Pennsylvania, and Rowan University. All of these universities have demonstrated leadership in this area, the area specifically of studying whether a health bureau is needed and then how to establish one. We don't know that these schools will apply and there are other institutions, consultancies, hospitals, who may apply as well and respond to our RFP and we welcome them. And of course, we will choose the best proposal to bring forward to you to evaluate to determine whether we want to study the issue of whether Northampton County should have its own health bureau. One of the things that occurred to me is, how much more could we have done in underserved areas of our county with testing and vaccination if Northampton County had a health bureau? I was thinking specifically above twenty-two. How much more testing and vaccination might we have accomplished? Had we been able to folk, had we actually been able to take the services there? So that needs to be studied. And that is one of the things that is an interesting dichotomy in our county. You know, we, we can know, we can understand how to serve Bethlehem because they have a wonderful health bureau. And of course, the city of Bethlehem and its needs will be of paramount importance as we study this process going forward. But how do we integrate the rest of the county in that? That's so important. How do we indicate, how, how do we do that? And I think a study will, will teach us how best to integrate the entire county into a health bureau. I'm not saying tonight that, at the end of the day, that I will conclude that I'll propose one. But I am proposing that we have the necessity to study it because health bureaus are more than just about battling global pandemics because after all, a pandemic like this only occurs, you know, about every hundred years or so. But there are things like immunization clinics, influenza programs, tuberculosis programs, HIV and STD, maternal-child home health visits, lead in healthy homes, pills distributed, noxaline, noxaline, naloxaline case, uh, kits distributed, disease surveillance, outbreak management control, rabies control, communicable disease education, clinical health education, physical activity, chronic disease, injury prevention. And these are all things that the Montgomery County Health Bureau provides. Now, it's important to note, because I referenced Montgomery County, they have a health bureau now. Pennsylvania counties who have health bureaus didn't have any less experience with coronavirus than we did or Lehigh County did. I mean, there, there's no correlation between having a health bureau and having better outcomes during this particular pandemic. But it doesn't necessarily suggest that we wouldn't do better in the future. And I think we here might conclude after a study that there are things we could do to improve our, our prospects going forward. So that concludes my report this evening, are there any questions? Yes, Mr. Brown. Good to see you, sir.
Good to see you. Mr. Executive, when was the last time the consideration of a county-wide health bureau was undertaken?
Oh, many, many years ago.
Approximately five, ten, twenty?
Well, actually, there was, to my knowledge, there was never consideration of a county-wide health bureau. There was a, the consideration of a bi-county health bureau. And as you know, from having sat in my seat, very often, the bi-county institutions don't serve us very well in Northampton County and we have to fight for our fair share. And one of my thoughts about a bi-county health bureau is, I know how difficult it was for us using my emergency powers and council's emergency powers to contend with all of the problems we had early in the pandemic. I do not think I want to condemn a future executive and council to having to deal with, in a pandemic, for instance, an unresponsive bureaucrat from a bi-county agency that we can't get anything out of. If we have a county agency who is responsive to the executive and county council, we would be able to, I think, meet emergencies much more directly than we would in a bi-county institution. But it's been many years, fifteen? Maybe a little less?
Are there any other questions for Mr. McClure? Mr. Myers?
Just point of order here. We just are separating ourselves from the housing situation of a bi-county, but you left a bad taste in our mouth, am I correct with that?
That is correct.
So, going by counties, a no-no as far as I'm concerned?
Well, I, I mean, look, the airport works beautifully for everybody and it, I mean, I am not saying bi-county institutions are necessarily bad. I'm just saying, we in Northampton County historically have not been very good at making sure equity in the, the services provided by bi-county institutions were present. And I think we have collectively done a much better job of that over the last several years. So I'm not saying we abandoned bi-county institutions. I just think that at this point, we need to study a Northampton County-centered health bureau because I'm concerned that in a bi-county health bureau, there are large swaths of our county which have different needs than the cities would go neglected by a bi-county health bureau. I have significant concerns about that.
Yes, sir.
If I may-
Especially our rural areas.
Yeah, Mr. Brown, your question, the last time I remember was the early two thousands because Director of Human Services, Mr. Redmond, put me on, asked for me to represent the county at the table. I think Paul Trust was sort of managing it and with Lehigh County, if I'm not mistaken, it might have been Mr. Stelfe at the time who was for Lehigh County. And I, and I can share some of the concerns the executive has. I can get into it in detail, I don't want to hold a, a meeting, but there were certainly positives by, by county in general, but there were negatives, which I would agree put, put, maybe put each county into a situation that they may find untenable because some relationships work and some don't. And some of the players involved, the size of the bureaucracy, what county thought was reasonable and another county thought was reasonable. The buy-in from the health, at that time, hospitals, now we have health networks, who at that time pretty much said, "I think it's great, do it, but don't come to us for any resources." You know, but we'll pay checks. So the thing is, I, I, there's a lot to it, but I certainly have no problem with the county studying the issue. But I, yeah, I would say and I'd be happy to talk, share whatever. I know we, there's probably information here, there, and everywhere about some of the meetings we had where the breakdowns occurred and, and Mr. McClure is aware of that. Not, money not being the least of it and, and what people projected the cost versus what you get from the state. So, I'm, 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 I'm supportive of a study by the county. I think that it's probably the most reasonable way to go at this time. I would be concerned about a bi-county venture in this area. And, and probably part of what Mr. McClure said, our region is, has pockets where I don't know how well they would be served if it was a bi-county because I, I'm concerned that in my discussions, the bi-county seemed to focus very much on the urban areas south of twenty-two and not a whole lot was discussed in areas above twenty-two, in both counties. So, that was, that was my experience.
And Mr. Heckman, I think, I think now is the right time to study the issue. I mean, I mean, I think you make a good point, baby steps here, right? We're, we're just, we're sending an RFP out to see if anyone will respond to help us learn about health bureaus and, and what they could do for us, right? But there are a couple of things going on. Back in the, in the time period that you're describing, we were told that a county of our size could not have its own health bureau. Do you remember that? Both counties were told that they couldn't have their own. I, I think the thinking in Harrisburg has evolved on that issue and it's my understanding that both Lehigh and Northampton County can have standalone health bureaus now based upon guidance that we're getting. The other thing is, we're about to receive our second payment of the American Rescue Plan. And one of the things you can do with that money is establish a health bureau. And this might be a once-in-a-generation opportunity to do that without taxing the general fund in the short and midterm. I noted that Lehigh County indicated that it would cost about one point six million dollars a year to run their health bureau. And I suspect that number, although I didn't call anybody to ask, I suspect that number is probably the number that will come out of their general fund. But the, the thirty-one million, you know, if we were to commit all of it, and this is, now, this is really, we're really getting ahead of ourselves here, but we could run the health bureau for quite a number of years if that number is right, that one point six million dollar number is correct, we could run it for quite a number of years.
Mr. McClure, I have a few questions.
Sure.
Would you, you said standalone, would you be looking in any way to tie in the Bethlehem Health Bureau at first or make any alliance with the existing health bureau?
Yes, but they do a wonderful job in the city of Bethlehem. And one of the things that caused the bi-county health bureau not to ultimately come together was the fact that residents of the city, not necessarily the leadership at the time, but residents of the city were concerned that they, their services that they were currently receiving would be diminished. So we're gonna invite somebody from the city to participate in the RFP so the city's interests can be represented there. And I, I don't look at it as a negative. I look at, with the wonderful Bethlehem Health Bureau already being in place and the terrific job that they have done throughout the pandemic, it would give us a springboard to move forward to a county-wide. And I, I have shared my intention with the new mayor that, to study this issue. So he's aware of it.
Absolutely, I, I agree and I, and I'm excited about this. Do you have a sense of a timeline or a plan? I mean, obviously you have a vision of this.
We're gonna keep it, we're gonna keep the RFP open for a while, I believe, Mr. Barron, February? February twenty-fourth would be the come down-
So these, so anybody, including the academic institutions that you've offered it to can apply as well, correct?
Yes, anybody, anybody who does this thing.
And have you considered anybody other than an academic institution, like any of the, the health organizations or foundations?
We certainly are going to take a look. We certainly are going to take a look at everybody who responds to that RFP fairly. One of the, I'll, I'll be just candid, the two hospital systems that we have in this Lehigh Valley are fantastic. We have great relationships with both of them, and they're taking wonderful care of our people. And I can't say enough about St. Luke's University Health Network and Lehigh Valley Hospital Network. And if they apply, obviously, we'll take a serious look at that. But one of the reasons I'd like an academic perspective from the outside is that the analysis tends to be given in the cold light of day without any self-interest whatever involved. And that, and that really is what I'm looking for, because we, although, although it was overcome in the process during the bi-county health bureau debates, that, that was always present. The, the sort of, who's ox was getting gored in, in the process, and, and who was benefiting? And there was very, there was little to no discussion of what was going to happen to the rural areas in North, in Northampton County at the time. There's almost no discussion about it. And this, we're going to make sure we know what we need to serve our rural and semi-rural areas in Northampton County by the time we're done with this.
Any further questions? Yes.
Doesn't Temple have a bias since they're affiliated with St. Luke's?
That's, potentially, they do, but.
Depends what department.
It's a big university, and I'm, I'm not sure that they would be particularly biased. But, but that's something, if the committee would come forward and say, hey, we're picking Temple, that's something you could consider when deciding whether to vote to approve that or not.
And so you just said that there'll be a committee deciding this RFP, because I imagine it's under the amount that we would have to.
No, 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 we, they just to review it.
Oh.
To recommend. Council ultimately is going to have to approve this. It's going to be in excess of $100,000, of $25,000. It's going to be, council will have to approve anything we do.
Just to get a ballpark figure, how much do you think it will?
I have no idea.
But you think it'll be something that council has to approve?
Absolutely.
Just checking, thanks.
Mr. Cusick, do you have any questions? I don't want to forget you.
Uh, not at this time.
Thank you.
Oh. He doesn't sound, no, he doesn't sound good.
I think you're free to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under old business, we have the consideration of overriding the county executive's veto of the elected official salary resolution. This ordinance was introduced by Mr. Cusick and Lot at the November 18, 2021 meeting, and was adopted by county council at this December 2nd, 2021 meeting. The council executive vetoed the ordinance on December 10, 2021. Would someone please introduce the resolution to override the county executive's veto?
I wanted to make a motion, if we could split it out and vote on three separate areas individually, I don't know if that would be.
Well, I think we should introduce the ordinance, and then we could amend it if we need to. So would you be willing to do the first part, and then we could take it from there? Go ahead, Reed.
Oh. Do you want me to do all the whereas, or should we just jump to the therefore?
You could do the now, therefore, since I did the first part for you.
Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Northampton County Council, by county executive, by county executive veto, the ordinance entitled, and ordinance providing for compensation of elected officials in the county of Northampton shall be overridden on the 6th of January 2022.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think so. It, it's a resolution, so I don't think you need.
So, now you, so, opening the discussion, is there any discussion on the gate, or you want to talk about?
Well, if I may.
Yes, sir.
May I, I'd like to make a motion to break out the, the three parts. There's the, a raise for the executive, there's a raise for the controller, and there's a raise for county council. And my motion would be that we vote on each of those sections individually. That way, if you're opposed to one part, but not all, you're not a total yes or a total no.
And a motion?
Yes, sir.
What would be the second and the vote of?
Mr. Lot, seconds. Is there any discussion on that motion? So what we do is, rather than taking it whole, let's take all three pieces. If there's no discussion, I'll call for the vote. Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Serinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Grofredo?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of nine to zero. Okay, thank you. So, then if we're doing that, the first part would be voting on, so how do we say this?
Well, you have the, you can use it, I guess, and, Mr. Solicitor, we have the Part 1, 2, and 3 on the original. Can't we go in ad order, controller, executive, council? I mean, I, you're, you're, as president.
The way it's put up right now, it's, it's county exec first.
Well.
Controller is the first?
On the original, it was, it was a number.
Do I go by the original?
Well, I, I just thought it might be convenient. You had the, you had the.
Controller's first, the executive is second, and council is third. So, let's discuss the first part, which is the county controller's salary of $85,000, override the veto of that salary. Is there any discussion about that part?
I, I would just say, if I may.
Yes.
I, I support raising the controller's salary. I, I think that it's an important part of county government. It's an independent auditor, financial, well, generally, programmatic oversight as well. And I think it's crucial, as you know, anyone who knows me knows, I'm a big fan of checks and balances, so I think that the controller is important, and I do think that, that, in fact, is a position that could use, would benefit from the raise. So I'm, I'm in support of that, I just want to say, and the reason why.
Yes.
Is this going to be a motion to vote on? How is the vote going to play out?
We've already passed the motion to break them out as three. So I'm going to vote as an override of Part 1, an override of Part 2, and an override of Part 3. We're taking each position separately.
And so which part is Part 1? The executive?
The controller.
The controller.
This is the original.
Oh, okay, we're not going by this.
We have to be on my, your side.
Got it, got it. Very good.
You should be advised that the ordinance that was passed is an $85,000 per year salary for the controller. That's what you're voting on.
Right.
All the pieces are attached in your document, so if you want to follow. Mr. Brown?
Were there any changes to the job description requirements, credentials that went along with this?
No.
Not at?
Mr. Cusick, but, this is Mr. Cusick's original ordinance, I don't think there was any changes.
The answer would be no, his, his function is governed by the Home Rule Charter.
Thank you. Mr. Cusick, do you need to speak to this?
No, not to answer Mr. Brown's question. First, there is no changes, it's specified in the Home Rule Charter. Secondly, some things to think about. Mr. Barron left the position to take a higher-paid position in the administration. We recently had a vacancy for the position, and only one person applied, so I think it would be appropriate to raise the salary.
Thank you. Ms. Serinsky?
I feel like maybe Mr. Cusick is missing Mr. Barron in that position, but regardless of the effect, I think the $85,000 is somewhat arbitrary, in that it's not necessarily justified by a change in position, or the alignment of that salary with other individuals. And from my understanding, this $85,000 would not take effect for the current controller, am I correct? It would go for the next controller. So there's no telling that this $85,000 would be fair compensation, what, four years from now? Am I correct? Two years from now. That's right, two years from now. So, I'm, I'm going to be voting no on this.
Any other comments or questions? Call for the vote.
What?
All right. Clarification, if you vote yes, you're voting yes to override the veto. If you vote no, you're for the county controller. And if you're voting no, you're voting to accept the veto. Ms. Fargo-Hefner? Ms. Serinsky?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Grofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Is it adopted by 62, or is it just passed by 62?
Passed.
Passed by 62. Passed by 7 to 2. Okay, thank you. We'll take the second one, which is the county executive's salary, to be compensated on a per annum basis in the amount of $120,000. That would be effective January 1, 2026. Is there any discussion regarding this?
Go ahead, Tara.
Well, again, I'm just going to say this is another arbitrary number that we decided that's going to be adequate for years from now. Currently, I think the county executive laid out a very succinct argument about why he believes that it should stay at $85,000. Previously, it was $63,000. It's already had a considerable amount raised, and I think that we can, if necessary, find a number better in the future that would compensate whoever the next person is, because we have four years to figure this out. We don't have to decide this today. And I'm going to vote no on this again.
Yes, I, I believe the executive's argument, or the reason for vetoing this is, is, is very valid. You know, we are at our swearing-in the other day, we talked about public servant, and, you know, we're all here to be a public servant. And this kind of goes for controller with me, too. That being said, the county exec is, is a four-year job, it's, it's a full-time job, the controller, too. I just think for, for the scope of the responsibility that the county exec has, I, I think he, you know, he's grossly underpaid for that position. I do, you know, part of it was, do we get qualified people? I think we got an extremely qualified candidate in, in our current county exec, so it kind of kills that argument a little bit for me, but, that being said, I, I've thought a lot about this, and, and that county exec, the scope of his responsibility, and the fact that, you know, this is a four-year job, this is his job, this is how he supports his family, and, and the fact that if we're going to get, keep getting qualified people, I think we need it to be not comparable to the private sector, because like the county executive stated and emphasized, this is public service when you take one of these positions. But I think it still has to be, you know, somewhat comparable to, to bring in good people. So, I've, I've, I've really gone back and forth, I think it's a very valid point that the county exec brings up, but I, I just, I'm going to be supporting it on the two full-time positions, so I just wanted to explain that. And while I'm at it, I might as well, so, you know, and that, I think his argument works so much better as far as being a public servant as us, as part-time people, as nine people. I, I, I really truly buy that argument with us, because we are truly, I mean, we're all employees of, of the county, we're public servants, but we are truly public servants, part-time, elected, you know, with, you know, our scope is large, but, you know, we are part-time. So, I don't know if that really clears up anything, but that's kind of how my head worked. So I will be supporting the county exec like the controller, but I will not be supporting the council's race. Thank you.
Yes, I would say, I, I too read the executive's reply, and I think for those of us who were at the meeting, actually, I had, I had said that, and I echoed it, this was the internal debate I was having, in that, and, and Mr. Cusick and I certainly have talked about this, I don't necessarily believe that more money guarantees better qualifications, especially in government. And I, I fairly or unfairly looked at Congress and other areas, and said, you know, I mean, I don't know about how that guaranteed anything. But my concern is, again, actually, Tara brought up something interesting, it is, it's an arbitrary number. I, I don't know if because you offer that amount, if you're going to have somebody say, I'm giving up my position at Braun, or, or this or that, or I'm going to retire and I'm going to run for county executive. I, I do think now, in certain areas, even Home Rule, the, the councils, the legislature hires a county manager. Now, if you were hiring a county manager, and they had to come in, and they had to present their resume, and what qualifies them to be the CEO of, of a county, to me, then that would be different, because you, then you, you can literally look at their resume. And this has nothing to do with any current occupant, this is, we're talking about positions, not, not people. And, and this applies to our positions, too. Elections are elections, and it's the way to do things, but elections don't guarantee the best, as we all know, or the most qualified anybody. And if, sometimes it comes down to how much money you can spend, or your war chest. And I, and I'll use that in reference to my own race. I mean, I, I've said to people, I thought what had to be spent this last cycle was almost obscene for a local race. But I, I look pure to the future, and I'm, I'm getting a bit nervous. So I don't know how lucrative I want some of these positions to, to appear. He's right, he mentioned public service. And that was my original concern when, when, when John, when we talked about this originally. I do think there's a portion of sacrifice. You know, it's not, you're not being, it's not like you're taking an oath of poverty or chastity, for that matter. But, but you, you are, you, 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 no, it's not a, I've been around too long, but anyway, I shouldn't say that. But the thing is, I, I am really torn on this, because originally, I said, sure, whatever, you know, I, because council wanted to raise it. I, I just, I mean, we're, it gets $85,000. Do I think that that's an appropriate amount for the county executive in Northampton County? Probably not. I mean, it, it probably should be higher. Should be $120,000? The number just sort of bit at me a bit. And so I, I honestly am on the fence on it, because I, I'm going to say to you, I don't know, I was thinking it more about 100, and then it, it was pushed, I think it was 100, and then the, after the date, we pushed it up to 120. So, I, without any disrespect to the county executive in the future, whoever that may be, or with the work they do, or the job they do, I'm not going to support the $120,000 at this point.
Initially, I was hesitant to vote on, one of my first votes being a pay raise for the position that I currently hold, even though we wouldn't benefit it directly now. But I do appreciate that we broke this up, because I think the county controller's pay was not a very good representation of the work that they have to do. But I do think $120,000 is a bit much for the county executive. I don't think more money is going to necessarily attract the best candidate, and like Mr. Heckman said, we've had good executives before. I do think the position deserves a raise. I think 100 is much more appropriate for the position, and I would also be intending to vote no on that.
Thank you. I was just going to ask that.
I'm going to add something. I just wanted to add, whatever we do tonight, if, if, for example, this would go down as a vote, let's say, if, if we didn't override it, and stayed at 85, it doesn't mean it'll definitely be 85, because it, it might be resurrected in a different format. And, and I just thought it was important to throw that out. It's not like a one-and-done kind of thing, because it's not going to take effect until the next elected term, anyway. But I just. But I just wanted to point that. I'm, I don't know, I'm aware of that, but I just wanted to point that out. My concern was what the executive wrote, and I sort of agree. And at 120, I just had a problem with it.
Mr. Kusick, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, sure. One thing to point out, the current salary of $85,000 will have been in effect and unchanged for 16 years. Unlike the state legislature, the county executive does not get an automatic raise per the cost of living. If this pattern were to follow, the salary that is proposed at $120,000 could potentially be in place until the year 2042. So given the track record, I'll be supporting the raise.
I don't understand that. Why would it, why would it be... Why would it be in place for another...
Because we don't raise salaries that often.
That's very rare.
That was the last case, it was 16 years.
So that's not, we're not doing that necessarily. Okay.
That's why Harrisburg made theirs automatic, so they could...
Right.
They'll like call it the midnight pay raise.
Correct. It would be nice if there was a mechanism by which we did not have to necessarily vote to raise pay raises and that they would happen. I get it. But considering this, I just want to ask a procedural question. How many votes will it take to override this veto?
Six.
Six.
So six yeses would override this veto. Okay. And is this, are you able to amend an ordinance that has already been vetoed and no?
Not tonight. You go back to the workshop, but you're only limited to the veto tonight.
Today is the veto. That's it, right? Got it. But in the future, we could pass something else that would undo this. If it would get done.
Yes.
Just checking. It's procedural, so I'm just asking our solicitor the question. Thank you.
Mr. Myers, did you have a question? Does anybody down here have a question? Mr. Brown?
I'll come back to you.
Having served in the executive role at that salary, I think I could relate to the number of hours I go in and the work that you do. Do I believe at some level these salaries need to be reset? I do. I know the amount of work. I know the skill sets and the talent that it takes to do the job effectively on behalf of the taxpayers of this county. In the way this was presented, I think I would agree with Ms. Serinski, that it seems arbitrary. And I do know what the private sector is, and I do know what the private sector probably would pay for managing. The budget's, what, 500 million, half a billion dollars? I guarantee you, this is nowhere near that kind of compensation. But this county, along with a number of municipalities, struggles with what do you pay the manager? What do you pay certain staffers, so on and so forth? And I think there are mechanisms to come up with a fair evaluation of what that should be based on a competitive environment. And that's really what I keep hearing. We want competitive people. We want people to apply, to run. The salaries are not probably going to attract someone from the private sector to jump in. That being said, I think there are mechanisms that could be a fair evaluation and maybe higher. It may be lower. I don't know what that would be for this kind of a role. But I think that would be more meaningful in the long run, unless it should be 100, it should be 120, you could make an argument, it should be 160. And any of those arguments arbitrarily could hold. So I think that's a little more problematic for me than the change of the salary. But the fact that a number was picked, and unless I saw that there was really some study or science or some way of getting to it that wasn't just, this feels right, this doesn't feel right, because we all have different perspectives on that overall. Thank you.
I could address that, because Mr. Kusick originally proposed the...
100,000.
100,000. And I looked at the pay scale that we currently have. What I did not do, which I'm hearing now, is I didn't rate all the class-three counties across the state and compare. But I looked at what we were paying, and Mr. McClure's salary is like in the 51st spot of the range that we had. And several of his cabinet members were making sufficiently higher amounts than he. So that's why I picked 120 over the 100, because even 100 put him lower than most of his cabinet members. And so I thought that if it is the county executive, it should be in an executive position. And that was my rationale. Was it mathematical or emotional? I don't know. It was just a matter of agreeing with Mr. Kusick that after 16 years, raises should occur. And this is the mechanism. The mechanism is the Home Rule Charter. We're the body that gets to pay raise everybody else, pass or fail. And so that's why we did this as well. So I, you know, I'm conflicted. I want to support Mr. Kusick's original ordinance, and I believe that it's time for raises. But if people want to come back to the table and talk about numbers or get more authentic numbers, I could appreciate that as well.
Are there any other comments or questions? Mr. Myers?
I came in here originally with the plan to just, you know, override the veto and run with it and go for there. But since I'm hearing other members discuss this in the capacity that they are, I'm willing to let the veto ride and come back with a different plan if that's going to be comfortable for everybody. Because $85,000 is ridiculous. 16 years since he's been, got a raise, that's ridiculous. You know? I'm not going to tell you, I know people made that and don't even have half the responsibility that the county exec has. So we really need to reevaluate that and come up with different plans. Since we're talking about it, it looks like we're going to be reevaluating the entire veto at this point right now. You know, but at this point, I'm going to, you know, let the veto ride and we come back with a different approach if that's what we want to do. To leave it at 85,000 is an insult. You know, I'm sorry. Whether we want to realize it or not, we get zero candidates. Countywide, we already discussed it before that we need to look at salaries and all, because this entire county, as far as salaries goes, we're losing people left and right because we're not paying them enough. So we need to really take a hard look countywide. So at this point right now, we are starting the ball rolling in that direction. I think tonight's meeting, if anything else, will get this started. We have to look at salaries from top to bottom in this entire county. With that said, I will go along with what everybody else does.
Any other? Mr. Giovanni?
And I agree with Mr. Myers. I think 85,000 is kind of low salary, but I think we should look at it a little bit further before we override the veto.
Mr. Heckman?
No, I just want to say, even though I'm not going to override his veto on this, I'm not saying I'm stuck on 85,000. I certainly can see raising the salary. I'm in that camp of 120. It is sort of a, and I have a tough time rating it as far as the department heads go, because department heads, while they're hired by the executive and confirmed by council, if he doesn't pick a qualified person for a department, I mean, he's looking at resumes, and you get resumes when we go to confirm these folks. And these are, for all intents and purposes, specialists in certain fields. I mean, I would, I would hope an executive wants to hire people that have some knowledge of administration, of human services, and so forth. But so in that sense, I don't know if I put the two together, because an executive, while he's the head of it, we don't get his resume. I mean, the folks get their resumes and they make a decision. And I tend to agree with voters on this thing. But I, I would just say that while I'm not supporting 120, I'm not stuck on 85. I don't think he has to be a pauper, whoever is the executive. Not that 85 is a pauper. Our taxpayers out there probably say, where the hell does Heckman live? But anyway.
Madam President? Just a point of order. We're not voting on the exec itself. We're voting on the position for four years. Just to make sure we're clear with that, and the public's clear with that. Okay. That's all I want to make sure we're clear on.
Any other comments before we call the roll?
And yes and no means?
Yes means to override, no means to accept the veto.
Ms. Serinski.
No.
Mr. Brown.
No.
Mr. Kusick.
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni.
No.
Mr. Grifredo.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
No.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
No.
Ms. Fargo-Hefner.
Yes.
Passes by a vote of six to three. I mean, fails by a vote of three to six. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was going to say. She got it.
Yes, we're fine.
Last and not least, effective January 1, 2024, the members of the Northampton County Council shall be compensated on a per annum basis in the amount of $12,500. President of council shall receive an additional $500 per annum as compensation for his or her responsibilities as presiding officer. Mr. Kusick, do you want to start since?
Well, again, it's been a long time since we've raised these salaries, and I think the number put forward is appropriate, and I'll be supporting it.
How many years?
I believe it will have been 14 years.
Ms. Serinski.
I just want to say again that I will not be supporting this, because I do not feel like I should vote on my own pay raise. But regardless of that, if I did vote on this, it would create an imbalance on, within our ranks. There would be some people who would be compensated at $12,500 in their newly-elected year. And then there would be other people on this dais that would be compensated at the current rate. I think that if we are going to seek a reorganization of the compensation, that we should do it in a year or by the mechanism by which it would be fairly distributed to everybody at the same time.
Mr. Myers?
This argument came up the last time we discussed this. And it's pretty crystal clear, it's when the new person takes office. It's not about those of us sitting here. It's a matter of when you take office. And I think it's pretty clear that's the way it's going to work. I don't have a problem with increasing this. I'm going to vote yes for it. I think it's silly to try to say that you get it both at the same time. It's when you, whoever takes office. None of us may not be here, so it's not going to affect us one way or another. You know, we're voting for the future, and I would be, I will be voting yes for this.
Mr. Lot, I'll just go down the line.
Yeah, as I said before, you know, I'm going to support the veto. I think his argument about public service is a very valid argument. I think we are at the seat of public service. I don't, I hope, I don't, I know why a lot of people run for this position. I have yet to meet anybody that runs for it for a wage. And if you did, I don't know what you were thinking. We also, you know, we talk about, we have full slates come election, and we spend a lot of money to win these seats. So I don't know if, you know, I think we're getting a good response for public service. So I don't necessarily think we have to, you know, increase the wages for that to happen. Thank you.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I, yeah, I know, in the beginning, before the veto, I supported the entire package. Lukewarm, but I supported it. The veto did, actually, this is where branches, as much as I sometimes rail on the executive branch as a branch, I, it gives you a chance to reflect. And I read what the executive wrote, and I thought about it. And I thought the point was well-taken, and I didn't... The problem I have is, and again, look, Mr. Lot said it very clearly. I think people don't realize, when you come on council, they say, I remember there was a guy once who said, well, you get paid, I won't even take a salary. Why should you take one for a half hour twice a month? And I said, I wouldn't pay you for a half an hour twice a month. I mean, there's a lot more to it than that. And it is. And I think sometimes you find that out once you get on. It depends on how much effort you want to put into the seat. But it really is a public service to a large degree. And the references made to the money that's spent, and I'm worried about local government particularly, because we see how money's corrupted the federal and state level. And it doesn't matter what party you are. And I, and local government, it's still where somebody says, you know what? I'm going to run for office. I get the signatures I need, and I'm going to run. And yes, of course, you're going to have to spend some money. But I, I mean, it's not like anybody, I'm not aware, and I'd bless you if you have this, but nobody lined up out the door begging me to run for office any of the times I ran. I'm thankful to the voters in Northampton County for the confidence they've had in me over the years. But I'll be honest, I know I've had people say to me, oh, I ran because 30 people, 40 people said, you've got to run. I never had that. I've had people say, I don't know why you're running. But, but, you know, so, so nobody's, you know, nobody twisted my arm to run, nor do I think people twisted anybody's arm to run. You run because you run, for whatever reason it is. And I know this, as terms of getting better people, I keep going back to this. This is a part-time position. Do I think you're going to get better people because you're getting this money? Maybe it's a fair amount. I don't know. But it sort of happened at the end of the year, and it was quick. The comptroller jumped out at me, and I'm trying not to be hypocritical here. That did jump out at me, and the executive to a degree, too. But I'm like to have, maybe in the future, a bit of a discussion on this. Right now, I just, I can't support the jump to 12,500. And I, and I can't even give you a scientific reason why. I'm just not comfortable with doing it, as I thought about it. The executive's words not only rang true with his position, but it rang true to me on our position. So I'm not going to vote to override his veto or vote to override his veto.
Mr. Grifredo.
Like I said before, I wasn't excited to vote on this as a first vote with all three. The reason why I thought the comptroller was important, because I think 65 to 85 is, 65 is just not current, and especially with the cost of living going up so dramatically. I think that it was important to get it to a realistic wage that is, you know, much more deserving of the job. The executive, I think, was a different scenario, that position being a lot more visible. There's other benefits other than the money that can be brought on and attracts more people. But as far as council goes, I don't think, like Mr. Heckman said, anybody is here for the $10,000. And I don't think $12,000 is going to change anybody's life, either. So I think the vote is very, it's going to take on a different energy than what the $18,000 it will end up adding to the budget. So I'm not trying to be, you know, argumentative on such a basic topic, but I don't like the idea of voting for pay raises, even though I won't benefit from it, for a position that should be a public service. And I think $10,000 adequately, at the time at least, adequately pays us for, and I'm probably the last person to be able to say this, because I don't even know, but I can imagine, after talking to everybody, the amount of time everybody here puts in, and I'm not belittling that, but I think if $2,000 is a deal-breaker to become a county council member, then you're in it for the wrong reasons, anyway. So I will be voting no for the county council raise.
Any other comments?
Just one comment. I just would like, for reference, would someone find out what the rest of these councils are making?
I think we could do the same thing. But again, sometimes it's apples and oranges, because there's only five or seven councils in the state. Philadelphia is merged with their city council, and their county council is combined. Allegheny, Erie, ourselves, Lehigh. So I could do the study, but, you know, it's different everywhere.
I'm just curious out of it, because...
Luzern, they have council as well.
Yeah. I did school board for nothing. So, you know, I've been on various boards for nothing. It's, public service, public service.
Well, again, I...
Some compensation is, you know, it's not the end of the world. We should, and I'll be the first one to say, it ain't about the money while I'm doing this. Never has been. You know, I've been involved with the community since I was 18 years old. So it ain't about the money. It's about caring, you know? But, you know, to sit here and just look at it and say, well, you shouldn't give... You know, but, you know, to sit here and 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 just look at it and say, well, you shouldn't give to the future. Somebody might need that that's running for office. You know, don't think about, ah, you can put your finger down, I'm talking.
I know, I'm just acknowledging that I would like to speak up for you, thanks.
You know, my my issue on that is is I'm not thinking about myself, I'm thinking about somebody else who may be retired, who's not making a lot of money, might need a little bit of that to get them over the hump. So let's not put ourselves on a pedestal and not think about somebody else who's running because frankly, you know, the little bit of money I get doesn't mean a damn thing to me, you know, but I'm thinking about somebody else who comes down the line. So that's what I'm thinking about because I've been, you know, I I I've seen things that happen before, and I I don't want to neglect or forget about somebody who might need this. And sometimes we put our blinders on, and we only think about ourselves, and we're not shouldn't be thinking about ourselves. It's not about ourselves, it's about somebody who might need it. So, you know, put that hat on, stop putting yourself out and think about somebody who might need that little bit of extra. I personally don't, and now the floor is yours, Sarah.
Hey, thanks, Carrie. I actually was gonna agree with you to some extent because I just want to tell you that I'm the person that wears the hat that might need that $9,500. Because one of the things that, I mean, I do understand what it means to have public service and to sacrifice. I understood that going into this job, I understood what it meant, and this is a sacrifice to some extent. Because there's a lot of things that we do on council that interrupt your day and take a whole day and prevent you from potentially having, you know, the regular nine to five job. I am very fortunate that I or unfortunate, however the case may be, that I am an adjunct professor, right? And we all know how they get compensated, right? But and and so I do believe that maybe a higher salary might attract other individuals who are at different stages of their life, who might need different income. But going into this job, or or, you know, more single moms, more people with set non like flexible schedules or, you know, things like that. I understand why people might be attracted to this, but I do not feel that we have to make this decision today because this will not take effect for anybody on this dais necessarily this year. We have a couple of years that we could evaluate what this salary actually should be, how the compensation should unfold, and we can continue to have this conversation. But essentially, Carrie, I am agreeing with you to some extent, I'm still gonna vote no.
I I. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
This is on on the council until, I didn't even know what the compensation was, quite honestly, didn't even look at it when ran. You run for the privilege of serving, I I think most of us do. But this is one, it's it's a token, it's a token compensation, unlike the other two positions I commented on where I'm not disagreeing that there should be a change. I think just how the numbers were arrived at were more the issue I had. This is one, I don't think it it's anything that really takes a lot of in-depth, it's a token, whether you change it or move it, it's not gonna really affect things overall from my perspective. Where the other two positions are full-time, there are, there's a lot of work that goes in, and certain skill sets that are required for that. So that's the distinction I'd like to make on on this. So I don't, I'm not concerned so much about changing the council's compensation to whatever this board or this council would decide.
Any other comments or questions? Call for the vote. The vote again, a yes means to override, a no means to hold the veto.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
No.
Mr. Lot?
No, and that is to support the veto, correct?
Yes.
Okay, no.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Serinski?
No.
Passes by a vote of six to three.
Thank you. Next, we will.
Hold on a second. Do we have to override, because we have to vote on the resolution to override?
Yeah, I can I speak up to that because.
Do we have to, that was taken into sections. So how do we?
Does she, she wants to know if we have to vote on the whole thing?
Overall vote on the resolution then, or?
That may be appropriate, that we had a general resolution, as I understand it. Council has overridden the veto on two of the three of the three matters, and I think a resolution would be in order to have that accepted and have council vote on that as well, just as a confirmation.
You asking for someone to?
My thing is, we have an ordinance, a resolution here to override the veto. So do we amend this resolution to indicate that to the?
Absolutely, because council has acted on three parts of that. That was drafted as a uniform, one override or veto of the veto. They now have acted in another fashion, and we should have a resolution in that regard.
Can't have, so you're saying have a resolution on an ordinance?
No.
We have acted to override or not override the veto. What has been drafted is that it was all or nothing, right? Council has not acted in that regard.
Okay, so this this resolution should be amended to show that it's two or three, but then you have to vote on the amended resolution, correct?
Yes, correct.
So then we're gonna vote, so we have to, I need stated.
If I may, if I may, allow me, if I allow me to be bold, resolution has been introduced. We should now have a motion to amend the resolution.
Right.
That wasn't, that wasn't.
Right.
There should be a second. If there is discussion on the amended resolution, which I doubt at this point, but if there is, that should occur, and then there should be a vote on the amended resolution.
Okay, so how do you want to amend this resolution? Like, what should be stated?
That the veto as to the controller has been overruled. The veto as to the council A has been overruled, and the veto as to the county executive has been sustained.
Can we make a motion for that now?
Did you not make the motion to break it apart, and was that not sufficient?
That's the amended now.
That was, that's the amendment at this point.
Right.
Please allow me, would you, would someone please make that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. There we go, move it along, right?
Any any discussion on the motion, do I have to vote on the amendment?
Yes.
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 Is there any discussion on the amendment, on the amended motion? Call for the vote.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Serinski?
I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Motion's adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you.
Now we have to vote on the amended. We have to vote on.
No, no, you you gotta, you got, it's your job to keep it straight.
Christopher, we have to vote on the amended resolution now, right?
Yes.
Vote on the amended resolution? Call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Serinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Moving along to new business, or any old business that I forgot? Thank God. Moving on, consideration of donation from the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Lehigh Valley Chapter to veterans at Greysdale. Mr. Myers, will you introduce this, please?
We're at at the meeting held December 2nd, 2021. Mike, alien, am I right now? Okay, I'll read again. Whereas at the meeting held December 2nd, 2021, Northampton County Council duly adopted an ordinance titled, an ordinance providing for, is that the wrong one? Oh, I am, you're right, I'm sorry. Military order? Okay. Whereas Northampton County Home Rule Charter, Section 202, 10, provides that the county council shall have, among others, the following powers, to accept on behalf of the county any gifts of real of real property to provide for an acceptance by an agency on behalf of the county of other gifts. Whereas the organization known as the Military Order of the Purple Heart was formed in 1932 for protection of mutual interest of all who have received that decoration, composed exclusively of Purple Heart recipients. It is the only veteran service organization comprised strictly of combat veterans. Now therefore be it resolved by Northampton County Council that it does hereby authorize the county executive to accept on behalf of Greysdale the donation in the amount of $1,025 from the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Lehigh Valley, Chapter 190, to be divvied and split equally among all veterans' personnel funds accounts. Thank you.
Any discussion on this matter? Call for the vote.
Kudos.
Mr. Myers?
Absolutely.
Mr. Gofredo?
Yeah.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Serinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Next, we have the consideration of extension of collective bargaining agreement and additional per hour rates for certain employees at Greysdale Resolution with the Council. Please, please introduce that.
Certainly, I just wanted to make sure because we have two of them in a row. Whereas Northampton County Charter, Section 102, 12, I'm sorry, 202, 12, provides that the county council has the power to approve any collective bargaining agreements with officers and employees. And whereas on December 16th, 2021, county council received an agreement between Northampton County and the Northampton County United Steelworkers Union, Local 2599, regarding the extension of the existing collective bargaining agreement and additional per hour payment for certain employees in certain circumstances at Greysdale Nursing Home and Exhibit A. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that the agreement shall be approved this sixth day of January 2022, so introduced.
Is there any discussion regarding this matter? Any questions? Mr. Brown?
In re in reading the contract, the the only question I had is, what is the total dollar impact to the budget for the step increase? And then for the two and a half percent that would follow that total dollar of this portion of the workforce that would be changed?
Ms. Barron?
I can get you that calculation, I do not have it. This is for Greysdale, correct?
Yes.
I can tell you that Greysdale is able to absorb the impact of that. They recently got 2.1 and 2.1 million dollars in ARP money. They're definitely able to absorb this with their current, within their current budget.
Any other question? Call for the vote.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yep.
Ms. Fargo Hefner?
Yes.
Ms. Serinski?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzick?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
And Mr. Gofredo?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of a memorandum of understanding regarding sign-on bonuses for certain employees at Greysdale.
Yes.
Whereas Northampton County Charter, Section 202, 12, provides that the county council shall have the power to approve any collective bargaining agreements with officers and employees. Whereas on December 16th, 2021, county council received a memorandum of understanding between Northampton County, Pennsylvania, and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees District Council 88, Local 1435, regarding a sign-on bonus payment for certain employees at Greysdale Nursing Homes, Exhibit A. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Northampton County Council that memorandum of understanding shall be approved as reflected in Exhibit A and approved this sixth day of January 2022, so moved.
Thank you. Is there any questions regarding this matter?
I have one question. I I I know sometimes it's typed, whose signature is that? That's not Lamont, that's.
The union person.
Oh, is it Lynette? Lynette, okay.
Lynette Pound.
Lynette Acres Pound is the AFSMI staff representative to Greysdale.
I just, sometimes signatures.
I was looking for an end date, it's six months from January 1st. Thank you.
So I just want to clarify that they had come to us and asked for these, and we went back and said that they needed more, right? We we bumped these from.
I can't answer that question.
At one point in time, we had something similar in front of us, and it was like $500, and this represents that change.
Yeah, sure, and I, yes, I really want to thank AFSMI, Greysdale.
Yes, we should.
For agreeing to do this with us. And if you'll let me back up to the previous resolution that you just passed, I want to thank the United Steelworkers, who represent our RNs and social workers at Greysdale for agreeing to the contract extension. They thought that we offered them a fair wage and fair benefits, and so Exhibit A, that money isn't necessarily the problem. But I want to thank Jerry Green of the Steelworkers, I want to thank Tom Jones of the Steelworkers specifically for working with us to get that extension done. And I want to thank the RNs and and social workers for passing that. And as I've said, AFSMI has worked with us on the bonus, but you'll notice the Steelworkers didn't sign on to the bonus. They actually rejected the idea.
Wow, how interesting.
Well, it it that go, that's Exhibit A for how difficult it is to raise those initial salaries to get folks in the door in these negotiations. But I thank them both for the different actions that they've taken to try and help us get folks working at Greysdale.
That's great, thank you. So thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Myers, did you have something to say? You're good.
I agree with her because I thought we could have bumped it up.
Okay. Anything else? Mr. Brown?
I'm just curious as to why there's a six-month expiration on that if the hiring is a challenge, which I know it is, which is what's driving some of this. It seems, is there an extension potential to this if you don't hit certain numbers or?
It's an experiment. We found that the lower numbers attracted almost no one, that no one who reflected to us that they came there for the bonus. So we'll take these six months to see if, when we, you know, have our entry interviews with folks, whether it was that thousand-dollar bonus they saw on the billboard that brought them in or not. And then you can avat, so part of this is about council, right? Council then could reevaluate in six months whether it's something they want to do, raise it, cut it, or, you know, keep it the same, that's why.
Excuse me, Mr. Lot had his hand up next.
Thank you, Mr. Executive, and and thanks for getting the contract done with the union. You answered a lot of my questions and Mr. Brown's question. I I last time you came to us, we all had concerns that it wasn't gonna be enough to draw in, and that's why we put it on a short period. We're doing it again so we can reevaluate, I believe. My question is, do you really think these numbers are enough? I mean, there's some amazing bonuses, and and I would like to just put out, we spend a lot of money, and I and I think we're doing the right thing recruiting. I, you know, commend you on the marketing, I see the ads, I see the billboards, we're spending a lot of money. I mean, if we can get our in-house people to start being recruiters, I think we really should invest a lot of money into this. I think it's a good way to recruit, we do spend a lot of money already on our marketing, which I approve and think we need to. But so I would hope in six months we get a good report, and if we don't, I think we really need to look out, we spend our marketing money. And I really, through my old job, I found the best recruiting came from inside our organization, because they could explain to the people what job they're getting, they could kind of work them through it. So I like this program, I I think we need to reevaluate in six months. I don't, personally, I don't think this is big enough numbers. And the beautiful thing about this is if it fails, if we don't recruit people, we don't spend anything. So i- in the way we break this down, you get so much of the money on a bonus, and you get so much after a year. So I think, you know, maybe we up that a little bit, and we build in a little more protection that we get the person for a little longer. Maybe we have a bigger number, but you get that last bump after, you know, a 24 period. But you could put on the billboard offering $5,000, you know, and I'm just throwing that number out there, you know, 500, and I don't want to dig. You know, 500, 500, and I don't want to dig into your, you know, your, your, your business and, and how you said. But that's just my opinion from the, my world that I, I lived in. I, I think it's a great way to recruit. I, I think we may be shorting it a little bit. Thank you for your, for your time.
And we do, thank you for those comments. We do have an internal ref, a referral bonus as well.